Town Council, if you will, come to order. We do have a quorum. Councilmember Rowe will join us. He may be a little late tonight, or is a little late at this point. Mr. Boss?
The Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One is now convening into a joint session. The time is 5:30. Director Thomas will be here shortly. We do have a quorum.
All right. Our first item is consider and take appropriate action regarding terms of potential lease with Trophy Club MUD Number One for use of Trophy Club MUD Number One Annex Building, located at 100 Municipal Drive, also sometimes known as the Public Services Building, one in the same, depending on how it is said. Counsel has, Directors, Counsel has discussed some of the items, or all the items, that just as you have discussed some of those. And here, what I would like to do is just kind of give you our discussion back on your points. And then we can maybe go down each one of those and see how do we come agreement, agreement. The first item dealt with term, and the Counsel is agreeable to anywhere from a 25 to a 99-year lease with obvious renewal options outlined as to how that might work along with termination options. Counsel is willing to stipulate in a lease that the building would be used for municipal uses, less animal control, and municipal uses could range anywhere from community meeting rooms, to office space, to storage, to senior center, anything that might be used as a town function. It currently has a meeting room in it now that has public access, most of which is offices in the, in the area. We recognize that Trophy Club MUD One has some concern about requirements that may, might be placed upon them by governmental agencies that control what they do about water or other services that they provide. And therefore, the use of the land could change depending on what regulations might happen to them. And from the town's standpoint, we would like to see a minimum of a three-year notice, recognizing that you may not know three years, but all practical purposes, it takes three years for probably us to react to anything, or to build anything to replace it. So we're looking at some, if we're doing an out clause and we need to say you need to be able to cancel it, then let's at least agree as best we can upon a longer notice than some kind of short notice, recognizing that you might have wording in that out clause that dealt with some requirement being placed upon you by TCEQ or something like that, that would probably trump anything that we're trying to do. Town is agreeable to, I think, which you all discussed about pays operating and maintenance of the building, and of shared parking aspects. The, as far as drawing up the lease, we did not have consensus on sharing the cost of the lease. I think in general, what we had was, seeing as though it is considered a MUD building, it seems normal that you draw up the lease, is that aspect. The terms of that lease, or financial terms of that lease, could range from anything as a small dollar a year to up. And I think, from some of our standpoint, if that means you have some expenses involved, the lease could allow you to recover those expenses. So the lease rate might be not just to have a document, but to actually recover expenses if necessary. The issue of insurance is a little bit more complicated for us. But what I understand, and if I say this wrong, I can get corrected, but if we have a lease for the use of the building, then we can get insurance to cover the shell, the internal part of the shell of the building. In other words, the leasehold improvements. So if you looked at it as we, the building was vacant, it was built with just walls and roof, and the town came in there, finished it out with walls, plumbing, fixtures, whatever they did, all of those are leasehold improvements. And we, if we have a lease, we can get insurance to cover a catastrophe that affected those leasehold improvements. But they would not cover the exterior walls, roof, kind of thing, because we don't own it. Unless, somehow in the lease, there was a way to stipulate that differently. I think that complicates the matter, but we're not opposed to that. If you want us to cover the entire thing, if there's a way to solve that legally, but I think the problem with that is that it, it tends to have wording that says, "The building is the, is the town's, not the MUD." And that wasn't where we were headed. So I think that complicates it, but we're not opposed to those types of things. So Counsel, have I misstated anything that you would like to add to it? Anybody?
I have some, I have some general comments on that, if I can make them. Is that okay?
Please, Garrett.
Absolutely.
In, in terms of the leasing of the, of the, of the building, if you will, in, in commercial real estate, I would believe that this transaction would be easily approached if we said that this was a ground lease, okay? Where the city was leasing the ground from the MUD. All right? Well, what that means is during the period of the ground lease, we can improve the land, however we deem necessary to improve it. Or if there's an improvement on it, we have access to that improvement. Okay? So at the duration of the ground lease, whatever is on the ground, you own. Okay? So if we were to, if the building was to burn down next year, we had a ground lease, then we, as a city, would be able to erect a brand-new facility with our insurance proceeds. Okay? Then at the duration of the lease, that facility would belong to you, whether it was a new facility or an old 20-year-old facility. I think that that would be an easier way to approach this. I think we could draw up a lease very quickly that says, "It's a lease, just for the ground, and whatever the improvements are, we improve," which we've already done, "and those improvements at the termination of the lease belong to the MUD." That way, our insurance carrier would simply say, "Okay, whatever improvements you've done, you can cover them. If there's a catastrophe, we take care of it. We could put in the lease that we're responsible for all utilities, maintenance, and whatever to the facility." It would be a real simple lease. I would suggest that, you know, we go print out a standard lease form. We pay our attorney whatever it costs. Y'all just pay y'all's attorney. And I think at that point, it's how much does it cost? And, and at what point do y'all get the improvements back? Those are my just quick thoughts.
I, I had a question. When you say ground lease, you talking about the ground as the footprint of the current building?
Correct. Well, you can determine the, the footprint to be whatever you would want it to be, but that would be acceptable.
But, but I guess, are you ask, excuse me, are you asking extending 10-foot around the building, or what were you trying to say?
Well, usually, ground leases, as Garrett, you know, so eloquently explained, alliance, you know, airport. I mean, you go lease a land, you build whatever hangar you want on it. They own the hangar. Technically, they did all the improvements on it. Burns down, they're lost. This one, there's a footprint already there. And I don't know what the balance of the money borrowed, the bond, or the certificate obligation. How many more years do you have on that?
Ten.
Ten years, so 2015, 20, I mean, 2025, 2024?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
And what's the balance of that?
Four forty as of today. At the end of the year, it'll be, we'll, we'll have made another payment. It'll be three seventy-one.
So I have the six fifty borrowed, you have four forty left? And what's currently today, as far as guaranteeing, if something happened, that would be paid back?
I didn't understand the question. I'm sorry.
If something happened today, usually you buy a house, say it's 400,000. You put insurance on it. It burns down. You haven't insured for 500,000. You get 400. What, in today's standard, or today, what guarantees that you have the four forty or whatever?
And to be honest with you, there's no guarantee. It would, because right now, the MUD has got that building insured.
We own, we own the shell, so I'm in the insurance industry. If we have the policy, the money would come to us.
Right.
Again, the question, how would the town repay the four forty?
It's just their debt.
Their debt. So it goes to taxpayers?
What we do have is insurance-owned contents that we have now secured.
So desks, carpeting?
And so that happens to be listed at three-quarters of a million dollars.
That covers?
Nobody thinks there's three-quarters of a million dollars' worth of furniture and fixtures in there.
But that doesn't pay off the structure.
That is correct. It doesn't pay off the debt or the structure. And so, we can't get that, is our understanding, without a lease, as long as we don't own it. So what Garrett is suggesting is, a ground lease would be Beck Fields out there says, "For lease, ground lease."
Right.
And if somebody wanted to lease that land from him and, and build something, they could do so, assuming that it was allowed in the ground lease. He ends up with that facility at the end of the lease unless they renew or something else happens. So I think Garrett's trying to simplify the thing and say, "If we just do a ground lease, those improvements are immediate, and then we can go get our own insurance on the structure."
On the tenant would pay the insurance on the structure.
Under four walls. And then you, just like a condo or something, you divide where the splitting line is, studs, drywall.
Determine the footprint, and we, and we would cover the structure.
That would seem to fix this problem of insurance, because my concern from day one was for you guys, was that our policy wouldn't give you the right money to rebuild that thing if you had it, and it went to the ground. So if this helps fix your problem, then it may be a good, right way to go.
So how do you feel, Counsel, about the idea of a ground lease, taking a fairly simple form, that's a ground lease that's out there, try to see if we can't make that work for us? Anybody on Counsel?
I'm strongly in favor. I feel like what we, the situation we're looking at today is almost what, to, to kind of arts, artsify this term here, it's almost like a common-law ground lease already. I think that was kind of the intent of what everyone decided should be done in 2006, or whenever this decision was made. It just was done on a handshake as opposed to on paper. And we need to replace the handshake with paper to get the insurance solved. So I think it's a perfect solution.
So let's, let's, seeing as I know, Counsel may not know this, at, at 6:25, we need to stop, because at 6:30, they have to start their meeting that deals with some bonds and things. So we need to be able to get out of here in that five minutes. So we're gonna try to move rapidly.
I mean, as far as a ground lease, I don't have any major issues. But again, with any lease, there's, you know, ins and outs of the lease. What it covers, who's responsible, you know, if there's subrogation involved. If your building burns down, and Garrett was, you know, dumped hot coffee on electronics, they're caught on fire, then, you know, how are we gonna get paid for our damages? So whatever you have insurance-wise, you need to make sure you have liability attached to that, too.
Town has liability on everything it does. But it doesn't preclude you, as an organization, carrying your own insurance that might deal with that in a secondary sense, is what I understand. So you gotta take care of that. So how would you feel about the term of the lease? What, let's hear, minimum, maximum, what do you, what would you like to do? And then, of course, it really doesn't matter a whole lot, as long as you have a way to get out or a way to extend it.
Exactly.
So it could be a one-year lease and extend it. I think from our perspective, because we still have 10 years left on the note, I'd like to see at least a minimum of 10-plus a few years as part of the out clause. So...
I don't have any problem, again, personally, I don't have any problem with a 10-year or whatever the, the end-of-year bond payment is, 2024, 2015, whatever it is. And then you have an out, which, if you terminate after 10, you have another one or two or three, whatever we agree on that.
How, Jim Perrow?
The, the term is, is certainly something we can work out. Before we depart from what Garrett had raised, my question would be, if there was a catastrophe, and the building was demolished by tornado, fire, whatever, and we had a new town hall in place at that time, and we elected to take the proceeds, pay off the debt that remained, and go on, would there be a stipulation in the lease for us to rebuild that building? Or would we be allowed to just take the proceeds and move on, clear the land, and leave it clean when we departed?
Well, you, I mean, Garrett's more familiar with this than I, but usually on ground leases, you have to have whoever is leasing the ground to approve the structure going up, make sure it meets all codes. And then you have an exit, too, like Garrett mentioned before. You could accept the building as is, or make them go back to the way it was before they started constructing and clear the land. Is that correct, Garrett?
Yeah. You can put that in however you'd like.
Right. And that's part of the lease.
So do you have a preference? Y'all maybe haven't discussed that at this point. So I think what the choice is, assuming that it did get destroyed, and maybe the town's saying, "Well, we don't need it anymore. Therefore, we're gonna take the proceeds and just pay off the debt and not rebuild it." Are you okay with the ground lease allowing that as an option, I guess is the point? Is that what you're asking, Jim?
Yeah, because what, my question is, if we have insurance on the contents and the improvements, and the cost of the improvements covers the amount of the outstanding debt, then they would still have their insurance on the shell. They could then determine whether or not they wanted to rebuild the shell, and we take the insurance on the improvements inside.
Jim, I understand that if you do a ground lease, our insurance goes away.
They couldn't insure the shell.
No, you, you, on the ground lease, you have all insurance. And quite, my concern is...
In a ground lease, but if we did a different kind of lease and just insured the improvements inside your shell, according to what I was told by Chris Ream down in Austin, we'd have coverage on contents and all the improvements, get a check, could pay off the note, walk away, and then you do what you want with your shell.
Well, look, I think, well, I think we may be trying to solve some things that we still need some more information on. But I would just say that I want you guys to be protected.
Right.
All right? And I'm willing to go, you know, long-term with you. Matter of fact, if you've got to borrow money to build the inside of that thing, and it takes you longer than 10 years to pay it off, I'm willing to say, "Let's go with whatever it's gonna take you." That's me personally. All right? Because I want you guys to be protected. But likewise, Jim, whatever is done, if the building gets destroyed by natural causes, the shell needs to be erect, re-erected, so that we have, oh, the shell and the walls need to be re-erected, so that we have whatever it was when, before it got destroyed, particularly if you decide to move out.
And I think that's what Garrett was trying to say. The simplest form is, if it gets burnt down, you rebuild it.
Yeah. Current, currently, it's, we insure the framing, you have the improvements. So if it burns down, like, as I said before, you don't have any money for the building. You just have whatever you have in contents. If you have 50,000 or 200,000 in contents, that's all the insurance is gonna pay. They're not gonna give you 750,000 if you have 100,000 of contents.
So let's ask this question. Let, let's assume that ground lease says, "You put it back. Car's down, you put it back." Let's say that you're at the point that you don't want it back, because you want another pump station, or whatever you want. Do we need an out there? Do we need a way to say, "Don't put it back, because we're inside this timeframe that says we're ready to use the land?"
I, I think, Nick, you resolved that with the, with the, with the three-year out. If there's a, if there's a need that is mandated upon the MUD, that says you need room for another pump station, or room for more people, or something like that, and you guys understand and know that, and that's in that window of termination, and a catastrophe happens, then I think what we should have in the lease is just a simple, actually, it can work either way. We could, we could simply in the lease say, "If there's a catastrophe that occurs, we as a town have a choice to either erect a new facility, or we leave." And maybe what y'all do is y'all come up with the, with the buyout amount. You know, if we decide to leave, it's, we write you guys a check for 500,000, or something like that. So that if we are going to leave, it's our, if our intention to leave and go to another facility, if you have language written that none of us will maybe be around to, to, to fact-check, and you want a different facility, you might want a building that's two stories, or looks completely different, and we have the language in that says we have to re-erect the same building. It may be in the MUD's best interest just to say, "Hey, there's a buyout in here. Let me take the cash money. We'll put what we want on here, because what we want doesn't look like this building. Maybe we just want to expand on the existing building." So maybe it's easier just to say, "If we opt, if we opt to not rebuild," you guys could come up with a number and say, "You just pay us X number of dollars, and you leave."
I mean, we kind of, it, it can be written in a basic, to cover all, whether it be a future board's discretion, an agreement with the Counsel, or something like that. But if your building's destroyed, I'm pretty sure our building would be destroyed, too.
Pretty high chance.
Yeah. I'm betting on those odds.
The tornado just hits us, and then...
And it's happened. Believe me, it's happened.
Mr. Mayor, if we, if the Directors would agree with the taking-the-ground-lease approach on this, then I would suggest that the district start creating a lease to cover all the details, because certainly after whoever writes this lease agreement, both parties are gonna have to look at it. There's gonna be changes, modifications. We won't get everything in it to, to start with. And perhaps, if the, if the district would agree, if we paid the, the legal cost for creating the lease, then in our annual lease agreement, there would be some amount of money in there that would cover whatever these lease costs would be. It wouldn't be a lot of money, I hope, but, but at least that would cover it. So I'd like to see if, if we are all in agreement that, at this point in time, we should, we should proceed with creating the lease with the things that we've talked about, and others that probably we haven't talked about.
Before we, I mean, again, as I said, I don't have any problem with the ground lease, the terms. We have to go back and review. But we haven't addressed the last bullet point, where we're gonna need the offices located in our building in the next two to three years. Have you all discussed that? Or, and if we're talking about leasing your building, there's a building. We used to have, I think, three offices down there. We swapped two for three. And, you know, we need that space because of TCEQ, you know, additional requirements and...
So I wouldn't see, unless somebody thinks there's a better way to do that, that the offices that we occupy in the Savour Building are part of the ground lease, because I think it's a different building. Does that make sense to y'all?
I think those folks would probably go to your new building, wouldn't they?
They would. And so our intent is, obviously, to have a new building. But I think what we should do, and I don't know, maybe it's documented somehow, as to how we deal with the current offices that we occupy in the Savour Building.
I mean, if you want to talk about that as a separate subject, that's fine with me. On a, a short term, no more than three years, or something like that, you would vacate those offices. Whether you have to crunch down, at that time, hopefully, you have a new town hall, and hopefully, prior to that, you have a new police station, chief or, props to you. You know, but we will need those space, that space.
I think let's deal with that as a different topic. It's not the ground lease, I think, that we're dealing with. But it's surely something that needs to somehow be addressed.
And since we're together, I mean, we need to agree that we'll address that.
Okay. Any objection, Counsel, considering that?
Jim Hayes had a comment.
Jim?
I don't have an objection. My question is, what have we decided on the term of lease? What, how many years have we decided?
I don't think we have. I think I would like to see 25. But always, there's an out clause that, based on what y'all's needs are. But...
I thought you said 10 earlier.
I said, "Minimum, 10." Only because we still owe 10.
Right.
And if I was looking at an out clause that says three years' notice, I would probably say, you know, you want 10 years?
Plus three.
Plus three would be my minimum. But just picking a figure, it almost doesn't matter to me.
Yeah.
Because at some point, you either need it, and you want us out, or we want out, or we want to stay. And we need to be able to renew.
You'd have a 25 with a three-year out, and we could say, "Next year. A year later."
You could. So, does anybody have a comment about term? We really need to get this down tonight, so that you at least start with that, I think. Would y'all agree?
How about 10 plus three?
I would like to see, minimum 25. Prefer 50, but minimum 25.
Anybody else's comments?
Nick, just one. Pam, I, I absolutely want to do this thing as fairly, as openly, and as cooperatively as we can. But I do not want to lose sight over the fact that we developed this contract with our dot on the four lots back there. And because we, we thought, we thought the deed gave us roadway access, it turns out it didn't. So all I want to say is, in the preparation of this thing, I want to make sure that somebody that understands commercial contractual law puts this thing together.
I think everybody looked at you, Bob.
Yeah.
I was looking at Garrett.
I'd like to, Mayor, I'd like to get back to what, what I was hoping someone would make a motion. And that is that we, we start creating a lease and, and looking at it. I don't, we're not gonna get anything else done tonight unless we start, somebody starts to create a lease, and it appears that, that you're requesting it be the district. I, I would like to, hopefully, that's, we would have a motion that could make a decision to create a lease and then go from there.
I make a motion that we focus our attention on a, a ground lease with the Towne Trophy Club for the annex.
Second.
Got a motion in a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? It is unanimous?
I don't think we need a motion in that endeavor. However, I would like to see, so that the MUD Board sees this, if somebody wishes to make a motion that they would prefer that the ground lease have a term of X, we can at least vote on that, or discuss that, and then they will know exactly what we're talking about.
Right. Any specifics that the Counsel has that they wish to make sure it gets into the lease? If you'd put that in right, give it to us, then we, we can deal with that as, as early as possible. And I agree, Mayor.
I'll make the motion that we recommend that the ground lease have a minimum of 25 years. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. We have Councilmember Lamont, who moved that the ground lease at least be considered by the MUD of 25 years minimum, and a second from Jim Perrow. Any discussion?
I, I want to, can I amend? Can I make an amendment to it?
Yes, you can.
Okay. It's, I agree with the 25 years, but I think that we should give the MUD the out clause with the three-year notice provision, if there is a government mandated reason for, for y'all to have that. So it's not just that you want us to leave in three years, but it's some, there's some reason, some necessity that's imposed on you that would require you to have that facility, then you could exercise a three-year option.
Do you have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
So Councilmember Reed moved to amend the motion, so it would be a 25-year lease with a three-year out clause, allowed by the MUD to counsel the lease if it's needed for some government-mandated necessity.
Correct.
Any other discussion about that? All right. So I'll give a chance for anyone else to ask a question.
Thanks. Is it, I mean, I know you're in the business, and I've dealt with commercial leases, too, but is it normal to have a reason to do termination, a specific reason? I, I haven't run across that too often.
It's not really normal to have a ground lease where the landlord has the ability to terminate the lease period, for any reason.
No, I mean, usually, it's a two, one, two, three. It's a certain amount of time to let the people move out.
Right.
But not for specific reasons, or I haven't seen half these reasons have to be met.
Oh, no. I mean, yeah, it's, it's, what we're doing is not really that industry standard to begin with. But I think in this particular case, what we're doing is, we're saying that as a tenant that's improving y'all's land, we're actually willing to give you, I mean, we could, like you said earlier, you could tell us tomorrow, "Well, in three years, you gotta be out." We're gonna have to eat that cost. So I think it's probably appropriate to put a stipulation on it and say, "You know what? We're willing to eat that cost, because we're taking the risk. But there needs to be a, a reason, a logical reason behind it." So if there's reason to eat it.
The reason I ask, I mean, the town has been there, it has celebrated 30 years.
Right.
I mean, they haven't been kicked out yet. So, again, things happen in the future, but, I mean, we're supposed to be partners. We're all the same person, you know, for the most part, citizens or customers. So there has to be some trust factor here.
Kevin, I agree with you. I would rather run all business on a handshake, and everybody be trustworthy. But the reason you draw up a lease is to, really, what it's do is to cover the unexpected, to cover the oddity. That's the only reason you're doing leases, anyway.
I think from our standpoint, we don't anticipate terminating. Right now, the discussion of Counsel has been to build a building that doesn't necessarily give that space in the new building. And part of that is because of land restrictions. But that could always change, 'cause I can't guarantee what's gonna happen there. And so, from one aspect, we don't anticipate not using the facility in the long-range plans. So I think that was just a concern.
And that's why we brought up, you know, have a guaranteed 10, or 15, or whatever it is, and then have a termination clause after that first period, where if you do a 25 and have a three, you can terminate anytime. I don't agree with that part.
Oh, you're saying a fixed 10 with no termination?
With a termination after the ten.
After the ten.
Yeah, fix, ten, fifteen.
Yeah.
That accomplishes the same...
Because then you go to your bond, and you might say, oh, now we don't have that bond payment, let's build another deal.
That's even better, but what, the reason I was proposing, what I was proposing, and it is odd, you're correct, is I was trying to be sensitive to the fact that somebody might come in and tell you guys, you have to do X, Y, Z, and you just can't physically do it with what you have.
But I, I don't, and I agree, that's why I said, have a guaranteed, okay, there's a guarantee of ten years, and then after that, you have the option of a three-year or two-year, whatever the termination is.
That's better.
We would want to be able to renew the lease also.
Yeah, well, you can renew it, but again, I'm, I personally, I don't like stipulating, okay, you can only build a white storage tank that's twenty feet tall, you know, and the sun hits the west side of it, you know?
Just taking the flip of that, though, what if T C Q does come in and say, guys, you gotta build two years from now, you're gonna say, sorry, come back and see us in ten years?
Build...
You, you say you might need the space.
Twice the storage you have today, I don't know.
So you, you're restricting T C Q from coming in and telling you to do anything?
We couldn't build a...
If you wanna guarantee ten years.
We couldn't build a storage tank where that annex building is, as far as...
A small one.
But you never, you never... No baby tank.
You never limited to a storage tank, you just said, you might need the space for some type of governmental requirement, I never heard storage tank, so if they come in tomorrow, or two years from now and say, you need that space, for whatever reason, but you're, you're willing to lock us in for ten years where you can't do anything? I mean, I'm taking your side on this one.
So we could come tomorrow and say, hey, we need that space, we, you know, and...
Provided a governmental entity says, says something to you, yeah.
No?
You got three years out.
I, I...
So with what...
Those are like...
Okay, so I think, let me just stop just a second, 'cause we, limited time, that's an issue for them to discuss and deal with, we have a motion...
Nick, I have one question about your motion.
On the second, that will, with an amendment that will act on it, it's nothing more than wishes to the Mud Board, has no governing power to the Mud Board.
Wouldn't you also like something that says, if you have something happen to you in the next twenty-five years that's unforeseen, that you would also like an out clause of some period of time? I mean, I'm just trying to protect you guys.
I understand what you're saying, and I'm gonna amend my motion to make, to go with what Kevin's saying, to answer your question, Jim, I'm guessing that the amount of rent we're talking about is probably not a substantial amount, so terminating it or holding on to it is probably not gonna make a bit of difference anyway.
Much y'all have.
So let me amend this to go with what Kevin was saying, so I'm gonna make an amendment to my amendment, and that is that we do a twenty-five-year ground lease, with the first ten years being a protected period, after ten years, the Mud has the option to exercise a right to terminate us with three years' notice if a government entity was to force you guys out, that's my amendment.
I'll second it.
Did you still have that due to a governmental request or order or whatever?
That would be my preference, but if once, if we have the ten years, then it's, we can just say they give us three years' notice to leave, that's fine.
Yeah.
We don't have to talk about it.
Okay, I'm gonna take that as a substitute motion, so we'll just take one action on it. Garrett Reed has moved, and Greg Lamont has seconded, that we propose to the Mud a twenty-five-year ground lease with a ten-year protected period, that the Mud has an option to terminate with three years' notice, prior notice, that capture it?
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, show your hands, all opposed, same sign, no opposed, it is unanimous, so, don't know that y'all need to take any action.
Can we address that other bullet point real quick, if you'd like to see if the council is for doing a, a two or three-year lease on, on the offices that are here?
We, we haven't talked about it, but I don't, I'll, I don't know that it's on our agenda.
Well, it wasn't that same bullet points that, I mean, we sent you.
Well, but on our agenda...
It's on there, it's on the agenda for the lease of the annex building and stuff.
It's not the annex building.
Well...
Not the annex, this is...
Annex building located, the, the address for even the Sephora Building is one hundred Municipal Drive, they're both one hundred Municipal Drive, but to me, it kinda takes it outside what the term is, is annex building, so I'm gonna say...
Patricia, you have any...
You mean Pam?
No, Patricia, I was looking at you.
You were looking at me, okay.
We're posted for annex building, I mean, at the moment that we decided we were gonna pull that out and have it a separate agreement, we're not talking about the annex building anymore, so I believe that we, we can make a note of that and put that on our upcoming agenda and provide something back, but not tonight.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, can I make one more motion?
Yes, you may.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the City Council form a subcommittee consisting of me and Councilmember Kurtz, to get together with a subcommittee, two members from the Mud, to work out this negotiation based on the general topics we have, and then bring back to the body at a later date as a completed document.
I'll second that. So who seconded that motion?
Perro.
Jim did. Garrett Reed moved, and Jim Perro seconded, that we form a committee of Garrett Reed and Tim Kurtz to work out the details on the ground lease, is that what you wanted to do?
That's what I'd like to do, and I'd like to have some, two members of the Mud to join, I'd let them pick it if they'd like it.
They'll deal with that separate.
Right.
Any discussion about this? Hearing none? Before I call for the vote, I'm gonna say that this is in order, even though it's not listed as that kind of thing on the agenda, but I'm gonna take it as a, inside the same subject, all right, if there's no objection to that. All in favor, show your hands, all opposed, same sign, no opposed, it is unanimous, it does carry, and President Moss, I think we've dealt from our side, item one, don't know if you have anything else to do.
I think...
Okay, President Moss, if I, I'm gonna make a similar motion to nominate myself and Kevin Carr to serve for the same purpose as the committee that's been mentioned before the Town Council.
We have a second, we have a second, no discussion, all those in favor, it is unanimous.
I oppose it.
Too late.
You couldn't discuss it, either.
Okay, item two, consider to take appropriate action, establish a committee composed of two council members, two citizens, the fire chief, to meet with T C Mud One Committee to perform economic analysis and review of other factors related to consolidation of fire and emergency medical services under one entity. I think this item was maybe placed, suggested be placed on this by Philip, is that right?
Yes.
Philip, do you wanna comment on this?
The Blue Ribbon Panel, and I, I'm not sure if, if the Mud Panel did or not, but I know the Blue Ribbon Panel was pretty adamant that they thought that the structure of the fire department should be under one roof, they, now, they said the town, I think that it's, it's due, I think it would be wise for us to look at both entities, just to, to vet both, to see where that one roof should be, but, so that's the reason I put that on there, I think my intention was for the town to pick one citizen and the Mud to pick one citizen, I don't, I think our agenda said two citizens, and I think your agenda said two citizens, I don't think the intention was to have four citizens.
Yeah, I think your, your person copied ours, and then came up before, but anyway, Mr. Moss, I'd, I'd like to, you know, echo what Councilmember Schaffner just said, and, you know, we select two directors to come up, discuss it, see if it has any traction, and go forward with it.
With just, with just the, just the four initially, or including...
No, each, each body can select one citizen, and I'd, I'd even go to make a motion that I'd, I'd like to, you know, the Mud to form a committee consisting of two directors, myself and Mr. Toomey, and the fire chief, and I'd throw out Mr. Lou Opapuri as far as our citizen, to meet with the town and the fire chief to discuss the consolidation of the fire and EMS.
We have a motion, Kurtz?
No, go ahead, take your vote.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I'd like to open up the candidates, that I am in favor of a different one than Opapuri, how, what's the proper process for me to suggest somebody different?
Amend the motion, it would be, we can either amend the motion and not name that, that person tonight, which would probably be my suggestion.
Is that what you want, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm acceptable with the manner.
Okay, we have a, we have an amendment to the motion, and it's, it's okay by the motion and the second, in which case, let's vote on it, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
All right.
I wanted to question you, Philip, about, the word you used was under the same roof, I think, did you really mean with the single boss, already under the same roof?
I don't think he meant building.
I think the, the intention was, is that Chief Thomas has, you know, two budgets, two bosses, two of everything, and I think the Blue Ribbon saw that as a hindrance for him and for both entities, and I think the intention was to create that under one entity.
We certainly agree with that.
Counsel, I would offer just a couple of observations, if we form this group, I personally think that the town manager should be part of that, just like the fire chief, if the Mud wanted their district manager to be that, they could deal with that issue separately, but from our standpoint, I think that needs to happen, and I also think I'm somewhat of in favor of allowing people to apply for that citizen position as opposed to just naming it tonight, 'cause no one really had a chance, much chance, to say they wanted to serve in that capacity, so, anybody wishing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we nominate Councilman Schaffner and Councilman Kurtz to serve as the two council members, and that we open up the citizen appointment for applications. I'll second.
Can I object to one of your choices?
We, we aren't taking citizens' comments at this time.
Okay, Greg Lamont has made a motion to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Jim Perro, motion is creating a committee of Tim Kurtz and Philip Schaffner, and open up, to be on this committee, and open up to receive applications from citizens. I would then make a motion that we include the town manager as part of that committee, do I have a second?
Still hasn't.
Who seconded, Jim? Any discussion?
Can I get your, why you wanna have the town manager?
Sure, 'cause I think the town manager should serve on that group, to be able to offer whatever information is needed, be the resource for how they collect data, if they need to collect data, to direct staff, if staff needs to be directed for that data, so I just feel like that person needs to be there.
Would that be subject to that the Mud directors appoint their general manager to the same board?
I don't think we can have action that makes them require you to do something, that's up to them, so I would say that's out of order.
Oh, thank you very much. Just as a comment on the Mud side, I know our general manager is welcome to come to any meetings we have, so...
All right, so we have a motion to amend, Nick Sanders moved, Jim Perro moved, that we include the town manager in the group that meets, all in favor, show your hands, all opposed, same sign, Jim Perro and Nick Sanders voted yes, Garrett Reed, Roland Rowe, Philip Schaffner, and Tim Kurtz voted no, so not be part of that committee. All right, we're back to the main motion, and that is that Tim Kurtz and Philip Schaffner be named on a subcommittee to explore the economic analysis and review of factors for fire and emergency medical services under one entity, and that that also open up to receive citizen applications. Greg, what was not in your motion was how many do you intend on naming, do you wanna clarify that it's only gonna be for one position, or...
I, okay, I'll amend, yes, one position, 'cause they appointed one, yeah, there'll be one.
Okay, so we open up for citizens for one position, and Jim Perro, I think you seconded, is that okay with you? So the main motion that's before us is that a committee of Councilmember Kurtz and Councilman Schaffner be formed, along with receiving applications for one citizen position to study the economic aspects and factors related to the consolidation of fire and emergency medical services under one entity, is that clear?
Yes.
All right, all in favor, show your hands, all opposed, same sign, no opposed, it is unanimous.
I wanna make a motion that the general manager of the Mud be named to this committee, just to, I agree with what Kevin said, on our side, she's welcome to attend any meeting, but just to remove any doubt, I have a two-part motion, one, that Mud general manager be named to this committee, and secondly, that the Mud general manager advertise for our opening on this committee of a citizen, in other words, we want her to advertise, to give people a chance to apply for this opening, that last part was explanatory, but two-part, she be a, a part of this committee, and secondly, she advertise to see if any citizens are interested.
Do we have a second, discussion?
I'll second it, but I have a discussion, I, I don't want her to be, you know, and I guess it's up to her, but I, I don't want another meeting she has to attend, she has the option, leave it open to her if she wants to attend or not.
Let's ask her, do you wanna be on this committee?
That's up to y'all, if you'd like me to be there, I'll be happy to do so.
You, you can come and go as you want, but I don't think you need to be mandated to come to the meetings, that's what I'm getting at, so if you would just change it to...
I amended to say she's not mandated to attend the meeting.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
All in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous, okay, I think we're finished, Mayor.
All right, item three, and we have about seven minutes, consider to take appropriate action to request variance to stage-two water restrictions in accordance with T C Mud Number One and Town Public Improvement District drought contingency plans, everybody handed out at the dice tonight was a letter from Adam Adams, the Town Director of Park and Recreation, that delineated what we're asking for as a variance for the watering of Independence Park, Harmony Park, and Medians, and that is subject to the fact that we expect that stage-two will go into effect.
Yes, and I wanna make a comment about that, we did get some news this week that it's, the lakes are holding steady at sixty-one percent right now, but they expect that to fall below, to sixty any time, but they're looking at somewhere towards the end of February or the first of March to, to actually make the restrictions go into effect, so we, we have a little bit of a delay, that's not guaranteed, soon as the lakes fall below, or to sixty percent, it's gonna go into place, but their prediction now is towards the end of February, instead of before Christmas, it was right after the first of the year, so we have a little reprieve.
Mr. Moss, I've, I've, I've said this a number of times, I hate getting things at the last minute and asked to make a decision, so I may make a motion that we table this until the next Mud meeting, since I don't think we need to have a joint meeting, because you're coming to the Mud to have a variance, so I make a motion that we table it till our next meeting.
I'll second a motion.
Motion, you have a second?
Also, a discussion, basically, Texas A and M has, you know, determined that most lawns in this, particularly in Iowa, only need three-quarters to an inch of water over the week, and again, because we're going to once a week, I, I just came from a conference, and I sat in and several discussions regarding this, do you have any idea exactly how much water you are putting on these parks right now? Adam.
'Cause if you know the amount of gallons and you just look at the area and make a simple division, you can figure out how much the water should be.
Independence East, for instance, it takes 17 hours to hit the .75, has 120 zones, most of our stuff is an issue of supply and demand based on our availability pressure, all this is designed to achieve the .75 currently. We actually, just to let you know, the, the two-day, we can't accomplish, the reason we put most of that in, I'll tell you this, most of the days in there, we can't accomplish our watering cycles in one day, you could start them as early as six, but during these periods, we have basically practice and games and various things going on, and as far as the medians go, if we water at six, there's a lot of unhappy people, so basically, I've structured this in accordance with our current operations, but it is, it is designed to achieve the .75.
Okay.
That's exactly correct.
Adam, what am I, what am I, I'm not understanding, you're asking for the variance in the winter months?
Yeah, 'cause we still, we still, we lowered it, I didn't ask for the variance on the medians, but we still, even during the winter months, when you still water, you still water dormant, Bermuda's active, we just lower our watering cycle is what it is, so I'm saying.
The, the two variances for the parks are October 1 through, through April 30th, that's your winter time, I'm just curious as to why you need to water twice during the winter?
What variance are you talking about?
Each station would only be watered once.
Yeah, it's to achieve one cycle, it's still to achieve one cycle, and to achieve one cycle, we have to do it over a two-day period, we can't achieve a cycle during a one-day period.
There's not enough time in the day to get through the entire cycle.
I'm sorry, I got that, I really do, I was just questioning, struck me that you'd wanna do this in the summer months when it's hot, but you were requesting it in the winter months.
No, no, if you go farther down, there's the variance moves to a different, when you move down, Director Thomas says you move down to two and three, you'll see that that's, that's, yes, that's when we go as far as things like Independence.
Got you, I see it, thank you.
I have a question, do we, have you been tracking usage on these parks, because I got a usage report in, in 2012, Harmony Park used like 27, 30-something thousand gallons, and in September of 2014, it shows that they used like 657,000 gallons, I mean, that, that's the, I mean, that's the highest in pretty much every month ever, did we have a leak
In September of?
Last year.
I'd have to, I'd have to look, I mean, we, we track it, obviously.
That's a lot of gallons.
No, that's a, that's a.
That's a ton.
That's a bit.
Yeah, but, and that leads to my.
It was, it was.
It used what now?
657,000 in, in, of September.
If it was late September, the only thing I can think of right off the top of my head is it will stop under current stage-two restrictions, but we ride, and under ride, you use quite a bit of water.
You don't put ride down in September.
No, it's, that's early.
That same time period in 2013, we used 786, so it did drop.
But look at 2012.
That used 519,000.
Pardon me, I'm sorry, because of our time limitations, the board will discuss this and may ask you to come.
Sounds like we have a little more time.
Yeah, real quick, I mean, do you, I'd like to see if you have a leak, like a water loss, if it, to flag irrigation leaks or valves leaking, that's what I'm getting at, is do you check that?
Yes, we, we literally have 80 hours, we, we have to go through our entire system, so we check it, the Mud's job, done a good job of flagging if they've detected a leak, that's actually been recently fairly helpful, so it's, we audit our system pretty much constantly. Now, we are looking at possibly, because of the stage-two restrictions, reexamining all of our nozzles, just to make sure it's the correct amount, what we're accomplishing per zone.
Okay, thank you, Adam.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
Can we, just as direction, can we also, if we're gonna ask for a variance from the Mud, can we also really try to emphasize other areas' reduction, you know, even in the park, whether it be through landscaping changes, whether it be through closing down the splash pad an hour early, just, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna ask a variance from them, I think that we need to try to shoot for 10 or 15%.
Sir, I did put it on the end, that corporately, we'll try to come within the 10% that you're questioning, obviously, we're gonna go quite a bit less just 'cause of the water restriction, that'll affect it quite a bit, but you're right, there's, there's, we would have to look at the whole system to go for the 10% corporately.
Thank you, Adam.
Mr. Mayor, one more quick question, have we incorporated the new low, the new spray heads that minimize the amount of wastewater, so it keeps it closer to the ground and less is blown into the streets?
Commercial, commercial applications are a little different on open turf fields, you can't use a lot of your applications, you can use in your yard, we're using I-90s and we use large rotor heads, and those are actually pretty efficient, 'cause the amount of water they.
I'm gonna ask, we need to adjourn, and y'all can take that offline if you'd like to.
Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One, joint meeting is now adjourned at 6:26.
The council meeting, joint meeting with the Mud, is adjourned at 6:26.